The county officials went to their home and they they said, we don't want any part of this water. They didn't even, they won't even allow them in to test their water. So that was one of the homes on Rixton Avenue. Now, the service station on Rixton Avenue, I don't think he really cares about having public water there. He's got to drill well. And there's other factors. All of the people on Rixton Avenue with drilled wells, I believe because of possible contamination, which you brought up from, they're gonna have to cover those wells. As soon as this down the road happens, they're they're not gonna be able to use those anymore. Just like they did up in Woods Mills with that water district. You remember when that went in? There was a kind of a battle that people, no, they wanted to keep their wells for washing cars or whatever. But but Kevin, that's that's really, I'm just trying to make the concern. I'm not trying to attack all your efforts in it, but this is ARPA money. This belongs, this belongs to all of us here. And before we go forth with this, I really think we've got to really seriously take a look at this. And quite honestly, Kevin, if if the town attorney was to possibly contact ARPA directly by letter and lay out this procedure, what we're doing with ARPA money, I would much rather see the approval from that end than to be dealing with the ARPA recruitment team. Because they have certain things when you spend it. And if you spend it incorrectly down the road, guess what happens?
You're gonna know what before then.
Right, Kevin, but Kevin, in all sincerity, that's my concerns. That's all. I'm not trying to create a problem.
You just made a mountain out of a hill.
Not really.
You can't get anywhere without taking the steps. And that's all these are are steps to get there. And like I said, if they don't finish the, they don't want to sign the letters and then agreements to be an out of district user, then it's done. If they don't sign to be part of the Marshall Water District, then it's done. If Tom Lee decides that he doesn't want to do it and put the water in, then it's done. You can go talk to those people up there and you can go explain to them exactly your concerns and why you're gonna, you don't want nothing to do with the project.
Kevin, that's not the truth. I'm the one who started the project originally.
You've been arguing against this project.
That's ridiculous. Okay. I tried to save money on this project.
You can, you can save money, and everybody's told you that. You can save money if they do it and put the the water line in for free. You will save anywhere from seventy-six to over eighty thousand dollars in the project to have the work completed by a private developer who is looking to get water.
Okay, so in in ending, we spent enough time on this, however, in ending, Kevin. So it's your idea that you want to take ARPA money and barter it with a private developer?
It's not bartering. It's not bartering. Because we're still putting it into a uh, more, uh, uh, water district. It will become the Marshall Water District right now.
But we don't know that yet because.
It will, or the project won't go forward. We could keep arguing about this in a round circle all night long. But until we have the contract signed, until we have Trombley signed, what his contract is gonna be and what he's responsible for and that he's willing to put it into the spectrum of what is put in there. There there, there is nothing else gonna be done. But the next step, I told you that two weeks ago, almost when we talked, that the next steps will be getting the legal letters out to those people up there to see if they're willing to sign on those contract lines. But you couldn't do anything until we got to where we are right now with the engineering. And the approval for the water district from the Clinton County Health Department.
Don't take it so personally. It's okay to disagree with something.
I can agree to disagree with you, but I don't want to keep arguing over or rehashing the same things over and over and over again. There there is nothing new that was learned tonight.
This is what I have the problem with.
Nothing new that was brought up for the last forty-five minutes.
I have a problem with this, Kevin. Be the last thing, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Taking the ARPA money, bartering it away, having an engineering firm, being in control of the ARPA, saying, okay, it's okay, we can do it, let's go. At every angle of this ARPA. Now, why if another contractor wants to come in and install Rixton Avenue? Why if there's a contractor out there that would like to bid that job? Why couldn't we let them bid it? Say another contractor would like to do this work.
Do you realize that he's not getting paid?
Excuse me? You're getting paid. You're getting paid a lot. What do you mean you're not getting paid? What what do you mean by that?
I don't want, I don't know what you're talking about. He's he's willing to put the water in for free, to put the lines in for free.
Wrong private property, Kevin. That's what the difference is.
You're going around circle again.
He's being compensated with free piping and everything else.
Kevin.
He's being compensated.
Looked at the wrong way, Kevin.
He's being compensated. You're giving him all the pipes and everything to install up there. That's a form of compensation right there.
The piping is for the whole loop for the whole district, which all comes part of the Marshall Water District. He will not own that place.
But still, you're you're taking a private developer and he's the one that's going to initially turn out the winner on this because the price of his lots are going to go up and everything. You don't think what town water on them lots, he's not gonna get more for them and stuff?
Because the cost of the construction work is twice to three times what the cost of the material will be. But we'll, when we put it out to bid, we'll show you that.
But so far, you've got an engineer's estimate.
Analysis doesn't change.
You've got an estimated, an engineer's estimate.
Engineer to do it. Excuse me, a contractor to put it in. We're gonna pay that contractor so much a foot to put that water in it, okay?
We all know that. They haven't put it out for bid.
Yeah. You only have an estimated cost from an engineer.
Can we all agree that if somebody does work, that they're gonna want to get paid? Can we agree to that? Can we agree that if 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 you work, that you want to get paid? So if we hire a contractor to put that water in, we're going to have to pay them. Can we all agree on that at least? Now we got somebody that's willing to do that work for free. Okay? Not get paid. And you can sit here till you're blue in the face and argue with me that you think that that's gonna save the taxpayers money, but it's not. It's gonna cost them, like I said, when I did the cost analysis. Reggie asked for it. I obliged him.
We paid for it.
We did pay for it. I told you what it's gonna cost to get it done. But you wanted it, so I got it done for you. Because you wanted the cost analysis.
I see what direction, Kevin, you're trying to twist it back.
Twisting nothing. I'm just telling you.
Kevin, it's ARPA money being used on in a private development. It's not right, Kevin.
It's all going to be part of the Marshall Water District, period.
So all I can do is vote no, which I've done. That's all. If you guys want to do it, go ahead. Go ahead. Do it.
You guys can sit here and keep arguing.
Do you want to vote no or yes? What do you want to do? You want to vote yes? Do it.
Yes or what?
Do that project, hundred grand.
What project?
Rixton Avenue.
We've already had that discussion.
What I'm saying, you're not even thinking about, are you?
I'm not thinking about whether the project's gonna go through until I know whether or not they're able and willing to agree to the legal aspects of it. And that he, the contractor is willing to agree to the legal aspect. I don't have those papers. What do you want me to do? Shake my eight ball up and ask it a question? Or you want me to ask a Ouija board? I I can't give you the answers until I get the paper.
You don't even really know how much it's gonna cost you, do you?
The the project?
Yeah. Do you really know?
I can only go by what the engineering estimates are.
So we don't know because it won't go out to bid. Not gonna go out to bid, so you're not gonna know it.
We can hire Barton Le Judas, we can hire ADEE.
We can put it in the paper and see who wants a bid on it.
You're gonna award the bid after, Reggie? Are you going to award the bid?
Of course you have, you should award the bid.
Exactly. So how can we put it in the paper for a cost analysis when we have to award the bid to the lowest bidder and we don't even, we don't even know if we're going forward to the project yet? You don't even make any sense. I I I don't even understand it. I I don't get it. You have, this is, this is a recognized standard of practice. Is going to engineer, getting engineering done, getting cost analysis. If you don't believe your engineer, get cost analysis done and then go to the the Clinton County Health Department and see if they agree with the engineer, if if that works, okay? Or should work. And then you put it out to bid, period. If you're not gonna pay for the work. Or in a few occasions where this has happened in the county where there's been a private developer that would want to put the water in for free just to be able to get water to his house too? I don't understand what.
Why couldn't he go right up to Mason Street and connect on there and do it? I'm all for that. Let him put public water. Let the people in the Marshall Water District give the approval and let him go right up on Trombley Way and put his water in. And let's scale back Rixton Avenue the way it should be. Instead of spending a hundred grand over there. So guess what, Kevin? In the end, everybody wins. Everybody, we save money. We save money on ARPA.
I'm done with this, Reggie. Okay, I'm done. I'm all done with it. Period. Argue with everybody else because I'm done. Because you're not gonna, you're not gonna save money paying another contractor to put that piping down Rixton Avenue.
Kevin, you have, you don't know that because you haven't done it. You're not an engineer.
No, I'm not an engineer. I but I do listen to the engineers. I listened to Ryan Davis and John Canosa that both said that it's a win-win. And then you didn't believe him, so we did the cost analysis. The cost analysis said it was a win-win. I'm done arguing about it. Do what you want to do. Vote the way you want to vote. Um. I contacted Barton Le Judas on the um garage floor project and low water separator up there. They're telling me a one liner, our uh, our plan is to have a full bid document set to you next week. So that came in as of April fourteenth, so we should have something by then. Um, you asked about this earlier. I went up and seen um, some of the Rock family, some of them are out of town here in California, one lives out there, another one. The mother is like whatever the the kids want. Um, so I've spoken to basically the daughter, um, husband and Kevin Rock himself. And um, they, we got a few things to work out. Um, they, it's not a no. We don't want to really keep the old water line going through the middle of that property all the way down through. Um, the new mapping for the Marshall Water District would go over to the Flat Rock Road. We pick up some of the homes there depending on how high they are up the road in elevation so that we can keep the proper pressures there. One of them did speak about um, getting their the water to their mother's house. Uh, the suggestion there would be if we're gonna do that is to have them hire somebody do their own um, cost analysis of what that would cost. And I would say that we would be better off to give them a check for whatever that is, if that's really what they want in return to get an easement through that property. That way it's maintained by them and the contractor that puts it in is on them and it's not us doing the work. And we didn't hire the worker. So if that's something that you guys are agreeable to, I can get back with them, let them know. Other than that, things are seeming to be going pretty good. We've we've marked out a section of Woods, actually. We went up there with them, did the walkthrough. He did want a specific way that the water line went. He wanted to save some of his bigger pine trees that he had up there. And I I can understand that. So that's nothing that we can't work for all around in those sections. So twenty-five foot, he was maybe thinking we were thinking a thirty foot right away in there. That way if we bring a machine in, we're not on anybody's scrapping by the way. So um, we still would have to write something legally up on that and get that section taken care of. Have the utility, it'd have to be utility right away um, drawn up. That's about where we are.
Kevin, would that, would that be a twelve inch main?
Yep, it would be a twelve inch.
In, if looking at the whole project in general, what phase of the project would you think that would? Would that be phase one of the Marshall Water District?
It is phase one.
It is phase one? So that would be the twelve inch main from the bridge to the water tower, huh? Be phase one.
Yeah, that's all phase one plus River Street is phase nine. All our problems.
Yeah.
All the problem there is for phase one.
Phase one.
Phase two would be the subsidiary routes and then phase three would be the rest of the village. Phase four, which is not in this project, I couldn't get enough money to do phase four. Uh, phase four would be eventually looping Bravo Road across the twenty-two B.
Yeah.
That way you have a loop. And that's the other thing. When you put deadhead water systems in, you have nothing but a deadhead water system and you have sanitary problems and everything else. With a loop system, it gets to pull from both ways and you you lose that 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 issue. All right? Like the guy from Rural Water said, you can put a pump in, you can run a second line alongside of it so you can keep it circulating alongside, but now you're still spending money to put another.
Totally, they wouldn't approve that.
They probably would. They did it on a couple places that were already built as a deadhead and that was how they fixed it. Uh, but it's not recommended. It's it's labor intensive and maintenance intensive. And you would have to have an electrical drop and the whole thing and pay water meter, electric meter.
If that Rixon goes in, then you have to loop it if they won't approve that.
That is the new thinking and it's not new. It's twenty-five years old, but we're trying to get into the twenty-first century here in the Dallas Goliath Falls. But like I said, it's it's the recommendations.
Getting back to the phase one, just a real quick question, Kevin. So phase one, I understand the twelve inch main all the way up there to the water tower. Then Rixton River Street. So including in phase one.
River Street is all part of that. That's all phase one.
So it would be in phase one would be going down down through Mason Street to River Street, right? You see what I mean? That loop right there from the bridge to River and then up to River. Would that, would that main be in phase one as well? Because the connection onto River would be changed.
I would have to refer to the mapping and I don't think it is.
So we do River and cap it and then come back?
It's not capped. It would be tied into the existing.
I shouldn't say, I'm sorry.
And then the mains would.
And then they'll be replaced later, the new.
Phase two and three, that's whenever it can be.
Yeah. Vern, how is, just a quick, how is your water? Like on at your place, is your pressure pretty good still? Yeah, in that section is pretty good?
Yeah, I have no complaints at all.
And it would be because.
You'd think so.
You're hundred fifty feet, two hundred feet from where the main is.
Yeah, you're close by.
The problem is the opposite side of the road, which was never taken care of. And that's another issue that I I don't want to get into tonight, but I I sent a letter to Benhamson for New York State DOT because they, the way, the best that I can figure it out and I asked for the after maps. Not they got, I got the pre-maps of what they were supposed to do there at the bridge. But I never got the the after finished product. Because after the project is complete, they should have gave us a set, a set of maps saying this is what's actually in the ground, this is what we did. The hearsay of it all is that they ran a four inch line over to the old four inch deadhead that used to be over by Scott Latour and parents, the lawn and that where Eli lives there. That used to be a deadhead main. We didn't even use a hydrant for anything for the Florida party because you could get anything out of it. But my my understanding is that they they put a four inch main over there and then they left a six inch connected going up Mason Street and they never connected the eight inch main back on the main street. Can't prove that until I get the after maps. That's what I asked them for for clarification. I wrote a almost a three-page letter on that. I have not heard anything back, so my next step will be probably calling down there and finding out what's going on, but I wanted it in writing so that I had something saying this is when I sent it. This is another folder I'm working on. Because it can't leave you less than what you had to start with. Running that six inch all the way around, you now have the lead, so you would have the best water pressure of anybody in the whole district, period. Because that's where it's entering. But from there on out, it gets even worse. But I can tell you just from this morning, it was twenty-two and a half, twenty-four minutes to fill a three thousand gallon tanker over there at the fire station. That never stopped. That's it. But yeah, getting back to this, yeah, it's all twelve inch main. Rixton or um, River Street would be taken care of right off the bat. Then you do the phase two, phase three.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Can I ask a quick question? Did we, did we skip one or are we coming back to number one on the agenda? Or is there nothing for number one on the agenda?
What was it?
The website.
Uh.
I do, I'll stay.
Guys, got anything you want to talk about on the website?
Uh. Yeah, just one quick question, Patrick. I was looking at it today and the minutes of the town board meetings for twenty twenty-two were all up there posted. And I think at first you had said even you were gonna put twenty twenty-one on. But the ones for twenty twenty-three.
I have requested them. I have not received them. I think Kevin, you can speak to it. I I guess there was some concern with costs maybe. And we're gonna do a training in May so that Donna can post her own stuff. But if 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 you want me to put the meeting minutes up, I can. I I just don't have them, but I can.
I'd like, I'd like to do the training as soon as you can.
Um, she said that she could not do it until May.
What her? What you, did you?
Uh, there's only one other person.
Barb and like I said.
We can do them. Um, I I think we want to try to get them as close as possible together because otherwise I'd be coming in each and every time separately and setting down, but we can gladly do it whenever. Um, Barb has reached out and then Donna is the one that said sometime middle of May.
Yeah, she'll be back until the end of the month. That's why I thought that. That is, I mean, I still, he needs to get to be able to do what he needs to do. And Barb still needs to be able to do what she wants to do. So even if Mary and I side down.
Do you want that ability now? Um, or do you want to wait until, well, you said there was a bunch of things that had to be redone.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I I'll call you to schedule that. That's perfectly fine. And Kevin, we can schedule you.
Well, it would be Mary and I because I think we can.
Do it together.
Yeah, we don't have as much to do as those who with their forms and stuff.
And Kevin, speaking of the forms, I know we had discussed like the sports form for people to be able to fill it out online. Now, would would you want it filled out just online? Or would some people who don't have a computer just simply, you know, the old system we had of just having a bunch of them by the door so they could participate? So would we want to do both, would you think?
Yeah.
Because there was a question of only online.
No, no, I don't think the question was only online. The question was if he could hit a submit button at the end and automatically digitally send it to Sam's computer so that they wouldn't have to then print it off the online and then physically bring it down here. So that that's what was going on there. The forms and all that stuff are still out there.
I spoke with Sam today as well and uh, I'm, our our company is creating a instruction set on how to attach that as an email because he said that there's concerns that people don't understand that. And then also there's an instruction set for after he gets training on how to just log in and go online. You don't have to fill out any form. You can just register online, but people have to be registered with the town first.
Yeah.
So he he definitely needs training because otherwise he would not know to go and look in the system at the roster. The other question is, is when people fill out physical papers, do they want to put that information into this, like does does the secretary or the receptionist or somebody want to enter that into the system so that it can all be tracked in the computer? That's a question I I don't know the answer to, but um.
Yeah, well, this brings up basically where we're at with that with the Adobe Acrobat. So that's what we'll probably look at and that's what I had for a topic of discussion after that, but uh, because this kind of took care of the issue that everybody's running into with the website, so. It's kind of ties into it, but it wasn't specific. Any questions with you tonight? What Howard did basically is um, he looked at a couple different um, of these programs. And I can read this thing. I don't have to read it verbatim, but basically it says um, that he he did some research. And to the prices that I received from two companies were twenty-seven hundred dollars and twenty-eighty per year to do this service. And the average for us, which would make the average between two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month and two hundred and forty dollars a month. Okay? If we were to buy this software through them, they would lease it basically through them. He also had a conversation with uh, another knowledgeable party um, that doesn't work for any company particularly, but knows enough about um, how that, the system, this Adobe Acrobat code system works. And he said that basically this system would run about two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents per year for one person. Or you could add up to five uh, persons on that system for about two hundred and sixty-six twenty-nine. So basically what we would pay for one month, we would get a whole year's worth of you know, service added if we if we buy it. I would have to speak with him and see, you know, what he would want to install and then teach somebody if they had problems with running the Adobe Acrobat system, our code system. And I'd have to discuss that with Mary to find out. I, we probably have to pay him under personal services or say and see how that would work. But uh, it's it's worth looking into. We can get a whole year's, a whole year's, you know, service for what it would cost for one month to have somebody come and do it for us. It makes sense to me. So if you guys are good with that, I'll contact the individual and see why he would uh, want to come in and do an additional training. I think you got your answer there, Howard.
Okay, Jim. Thank you.
You didn't want to see those, these other codes either, so I'll let you look it up. You didn't want to see those, these other codes either. I'll let you look it up.
So it'd be an initial one year round?
That'd be, it'd be, it'd be every year, right? That, that, but we would be doing it purchasing it, the talent be purchasing it rather than going through a third party provider to purchase it.
Okay.
And then charge us for the upcharge and then do the service.
Yeah. You understand it. Well, um, the forms that we have in now, have in there now. How do we get those? Is that in here? To a safe to where we couldn't, I mean, if we had a fire or something, we'd lose all that stuff, correct?
Well, hopefully with the IT, whoever we would go with, um, they will have it backed up off site. So that anything that we would have would be backed up off site.
Past stuff.
All the past stuff, yeah. I think he's talking about the records that are in my office that we should try to find someplace to put them safely. Cause the permanent records still sitting out.
I mean, sure, I don't know how much room is in that vault.
Yeah, you need a bigger vault.
I think that one's pretty much.
I think that would refer to a document archiving service.
Oh, yeah. Means that's something we should be concerned with. It seems like we should be, right? Some, some of it, maybe not all of it.
I, I believe, I could be wrong. I believe when we, we got the grant and they went through all that stuff a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, that they got rid of all the stuff that was known.
So we went through that.
And then everything else, even their room was inventoried and everything was inventoried. And I thought that most of it was put on digital, but I could be wrong. For the copies, the backup.
Yeah.
I thought it was put on digital because that was a whole, that whole grant was just on that, was just records, cleanup, retention and the whole nine. But I'd have to, like I said, that I'd have to talk with the girls in Fondo because they worked with them every day when they were doing that, that grant.
How many years are they required to keep like building permit?
Huh?
Permit. Permanent. Oh, okay.
You don't get rid of them.
Oh, how do you know that?
It really depends on the document.
Yeah.
You know, what the.
Like the house plan even as well. Takes up a lot of space.
Department of State states that any permit you put out, you have to keep the record for life.
All right. Brian, do you want to? I think I need a copy of that one. I might not. That one. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
I didn't make your copy to this one.
I miss you.
Yeah, I don't need that for sure. I think I want to make a one to show. Yeah. Well, I don't want to go, I'll make your copy when we're done, okay?
Yeah. This is. Yeah.
Okay, this is uh, another grant that's out there right now. It says, um, hope everyone is doing well over the past few years. And again, near to the association town conference, we've had conversations with Howard Newton regarding the town zoning update. To this end, we would like to make you aware of the upcoming CFA grant round that will include the New York State D O S Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan Grant. This is a grant that we secured for the town of Blackbrook. Based on last year, the town should be eligible for up to a hundred thousand dollar grant with a small minimum uh, ten percent local match. Uh, please let us know by Friday if this is something that, and give me a lot of time, something that uh, you're interested in. The grant law will be um, anticipated to be open somewhere around May first. And uh, what are projected due date of July twenty eighth, you know, or they'd have to get it in by the twenty eighth. There's something you want me to talk to them about, something we're interested in, something you're not.
What's your point?
Um, that helps out with cost of, you know, we got that, the uh, they're looking at the new zoning laws. At the end of it, when they bring proposals to the board and the board decides whether we want to make those changes or add those new zoning laws in or whatever it is. There's going to be costs associated with the wording because it's going to be local laws and local zoning laws. So there'll be costs associated with, you know, whoever we hired to do that. And then there'll be costs associated with, um, then it'll go through the attorneys to make sure that everything's written. They're supposed to have the proper teeth, so to speak, to work.
Yeah, why wouldn't?
I mean, I don't, I don't believe it would be a hundred thousand, I, you know, nowhere near that. Highest estimates we got at the time, if I remember right, was around twenty five or thirty thousand, I read somewhere.
Yeah. How much is, is the fee to do it? How much, what is it?
I'll, I'll contact them and find out if we're interested in doing it.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, Mike.
Sure. Save us to whatever saves us.
Save us on my money.
Yeah. Well, there's a ten percent match to whatever we get, but we're still gonna save ninety percent of whatever we've got.
Is that something you can do or do we have to have somebody write it?
No, no, this would, well, Boerge actually sent this one. They would write it, but um, I'll get with them and see what it would cost to write it and do it. They've had huge success for it so far with the permits that we've gotten, so.
So we need a resolution for the next meeting?
Yeah.
But that would also, the cost would also be added to go into that grant later. So if, if they charge us twenty five hundred dollars, that would actually be paid for out of that grant. So does a part of the grant come back? That's just, that's just a number you threw out there.
So connected with the comprehensive plan, the whole thing, a little bit connected together.
Comprehensive plan is done, but you, you want your zoning to now marry to your comprehensive townwide plan.
The changes they want to make.
And also the required changes like Department of State.
Yeah.
Which came in effect December twenty twenty.
All right.
Go behind.
All right, go golf. You guys interested in all this again? This guy's after me again. If you're not, I'm just gonna send him a quick email saying, um, we're not interested at this time. It was quite expensive. It's, it's pretty cool. Don't get me wrong. Um.
I think I came in here and talked to this.
No, this is a guy that dropped this literature in probably a year ago and uh, when we first talking about redoing the website. And uh, he talked, dropped several emails in that we've had back and forth. And basically this is um, all phone, all on the phone. But they could, there's a million things they could do. I can read this real quick.
It's okay.
But like I said, it, it's not, it's cool. It's nice, but I don't think it's of importance that we need it right now. Uh, this was again, I told Mr. Martin that we would discuss this at the work session. This was his uh, his thing. So what? He came in and spoke to the board in the residence, uh, the last month of meeting we had. After looking into this, we already did this. We, we did this like a year ago with another company where we buy so much of our, our power through clean green. Um, theirs is locked in that um, I want to say it was, I want to say it was ten percent for fifteen years. So I, even if we wanted to do this, we would have to do a resolution to get rid of the other company. And this is just another company doing basically the same thing. So I don't know. I don't think it would be a good idea.
To you what, you're not to you what, just.
Yeah. It's okay. Yeah, like I said, we already did it. Okay, um, this I got from my buddy up at the garage. This is a, uh, the vehicle that he was inquiring about. Um, I did talk to, I think everybody on the board about this. I, I, I've talked to um, the superintendent also at Danamora. They will not allow the surplus of this truck until the twenty sixth, which is the day after ours. So if we did a resolution to buy this truck, we would have to do it. Then we just have to write in the resolution that would be upon the contingency that they do surplus that vehicle on twenty sixth. So are you guys?
Was that the one?
Yeah.
You've seen it, right?
You been on there?
Looked that up, Mike? Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you going to see it?
Yeah.
Money's in the budget?
Yeah, you have the money in the budget, right? Fifteen, fifteen grand, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It's uh, yeah.
Plow and everything on it?
Everything.
Yeah.
And everything looks good. The frame looks good on it.
Yes.
Uh, you can't ever tell with motor transmission, you got trouble with that.
They've uh, brought a new clutch, uh, rear main when they had the clutch out.
Kind of mileage is.
Well, there's, it's, you got to understand, Danamora does twice the work that we do every winter. You know, I mean, like our trucks are, I think there was a hundred and twenty four on it. But that's, you know, it's a well maintained truck. You know?
Much for a diesel.
Yeah, you know, um.
Is it right?
What's that?
A hundred and twenty four thousand isn't much for a diesel.
No, what's it for an engine though? What make engine?
Oh my God. I, does it say?
No.
No.
How big of a truck is this?
It's, 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 it's almost identical to the twenty ten that we have international.
It's a tandem?
Yes, that we have already.
It's an international?
Yes.
Yeah. It could be an international motor, it could be a Cummins.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't remember.
How much did they want for it?
Fifteen thousand.
It's not all rusted out or anything?
No, no.
Plow on it?
It's all dressed.
Sander?
Sander, yeah.
You know, for fifteen thousand dollars. They're trying to sell me a lawnmower for fifteen thousand dollars.
No, I mean, this is a gift from Mr. Scavage, Martin, how we sort that. Because he, we've been talking for years since I took over.
What's the tires on it? Good tires or?
Yes. Yeah.
Man.
It's all set to go.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
It's all set to go. You just jump in it and you go. My God.
A hundred thousand dollars for a pickup now.
Yeah. Mike, does it have the DEF fluid? Oh, no, 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 it's before that. That's, that's a blessing there.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
It is. I mean, because with the, with the ones that we have with the DEF, they'll, these lights are, they're, they're very, I hate them, but well, it's like at the highway association meeting we, I went to earlier last week. All the new trucks, it's gonna, it's coming with all the exhaust systems and the DEF stuff. If the truck is going to be two hundred and thirty thousand, okay? All this new emission stuff, you're going to add between thirty and thirty three grand. Just for the emissions.
Plus the problems.
Plus the problems.
And the repair belt.
Yeah.
Is this truck uh, automatic or?
No.
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 That's good.
Yeah, yeah. They, they don't really want automatic except they're on all the hills.
They got an eight with a double lower.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Good in, or good in transmission. I think for plowing it would be.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars, you better write them a check.
Oh, hey. Oh, yes. So if you guys are good with that, we'll have uh, Donna gets back, we'll have a new resolution contingent upon Danamora surplusing it on the twenty sixth. We all have to wait another whole month. Had Kerry do some more digging on the phones. Depending on what service we go with, right now they're still hired um, until the end of April. Layer eight says they can do it, so I didn't um, lock that, so it depends on whether you want to pull a plug on this now. I know he's itching for a phone as soon as he can get one, but uh, I had him cut it back to, it's up to you. I had him cut it back to uh, five phones.
Who's itching?
What's that?
Who's, somebody's itching for a phone?
Well, he uses the phone every day.
Who, Howard?
Yeah.
Oh, you should have one.
Yeah. So, um.
I think anyway.
Yeah.
How about dog control?
No, we're not getting dog control on it. So the ones I, I just mess up. The ones that we, I, I did, I did supervisor, highway superintendent, code enforcement officer and dog control officer. And I could not for the life of me figure out who the fifth phone was supposed to be for. So if anybody can refresh my memory, I know we went from ten to five.
Who you got? You got, you got me and Howard.
Yeah.
And you?
Yeah. And, and uh, Cliff, the dog control officer.
Sam?
Sam didn't want one. I talked to him. If we had Sam on there, we don't even need his because he don't want one.
Really?
So who can knock it down again? The SMB account was seventy two dollars for the, to start the, the data. It was seventy two ninety seven. Four phone lines would be eighty nine dollars and ninety seven cents. And then four iPhone elevens comes to fifty five dollars and fifty two cents because you pay for them over time.
Was Gary Drola in there?
Gary Drola is not in there, but I got a extra phone on that quote, as I said, uh, for the five. I just can't figure out why. But these numbers are all on, on the four, okay? So that's what I could come up with.
Donna, no.
Donna said she didn't really need one. And so it'd be uh, two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty six cents a month for those four. And there's a one time activation fee, ten dollars per phone for the first month. So the first month, instead of two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty six cents, it would be two hundred and fifty eight dollars and forty six cents. It would be extra forty bucks, but it's a one time cost. Or we can wait until we hire our IT service. Uh, they've all said they, they would do the same thing.
The one that was just here tonight.
Yeah, they said they would do it too. So it's up to you. This is through Kerry at CST, the, the one we have right now that we'll be leaving at the end.
Are they making you that a two or three year contract or?
No, this was, I think the phones were based on a three year contract. Cause you pay like thirteen dollars and something a month for the, that, that three years. And they're like an iPhone eleven, you know, it's not like the newest model because it's under the state contract kind of thing. You like this here? This, this eleven? I like this, like this eleven.
Come on, man.
Two thousand and eleven dollars.
Yeah, it's not a thirteen or something.
I need one that talks to me when they call.
I'll talk to you if you yell at it, Siri will yell back at you.
Mike answered the phone. Mike answered the phone, it's good.
So what do you think, you wanna?
I say I can, there's no service.
Do a a resolution and wait until we actually hire somebody this month and then do it after? What do you guys wanna?
I think we should wait until we hire somebody, see if we can get a better deal. I mean.
How long would the whole process take?
Yeah, how long is that gonna be?
We don't know.
I don't know, I'm I'm sure they can walk it two down at the same same time, any of them, but. I don't know.
Howard, you need a phone right away pretty much? So you keep calling the office.
What do you think, do you need one before we sign or what do you think?
I'd like to see the town get the best deal they can, so it's up to you how you wanna handle it.
Good answer.
Yeah, point three, right, correct, okay, so, I guess, then if that's what you wanna do, um. Yep, they'll take over on May first. And you'll have to go from there, depending on what company it is, so. I'm gonna need to know though before our meeting, so everybody's gonna have to. Give me an email or text saying this is who I'd like to go with.
Oh, as far as layer eight type?
Layer eight?
Phones to that.
Store deck or?
Yeah.
Or, you know, um, I'm gonna be.
So we need to know when next meeting, like Tuesday?
Yeah, but I gotta need to know ahead of time so I can have a resolution prepared to hire. But you don't want you guys to have to make that decision tonight because you just got the last poll. Everybody does have all three polls now, right? Good. Um. That's pretty much it for me, other than this one. Uh, are we still interested in seeing if we can't purchase this land from the lady up on Mason Street? That's alongside our sand pit?
Wake up. Should.
Um, we probably should approach her.
I would, I would think, if we can get it at the right price, I think we definitely should. Even if you have to pay a little bit more cuz.
We're right there, man.
You've got it, especially if you're gonna put a salt shed down.
Yeah. She wants to sell it.
Oh, my God.
I, hearing that it probably would be something she would get rid of if we approached her on it.
How many acres is it, Kevin?
Uh, it's quite a bit, but.
Fifty, but only half of it you can use, roughly half, the rest of it's wetlands.
Oh, it is, now was that Ricky on?